So we did say the Pledge of Allegiance, I assure everyone. And let me continue this. Please note that this meeting is being recorded utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21 S2 as such. This meeting is being recorded and will be immediately available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone participating, you should say your name and title if that will be outside of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call vote unless the vote is unanimous. Chat features shall not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. All right, roll call. I am here. Jonathan Kellag is here. Eunice Pelles is here. Sean O'Rourke is here. Mr. Rooney is here. Donald Williams is here. D.B. Martin is here. Jason Power is here. He's here. And Kevin Reed is here. I signed the calendar. If there's no objection, there are no objections. I've signed the calendar as presented. I ask that communication items A through G be incorporated within minutes of the meeting. Public participation, I'll start with those here in town council chambers. Is there any member of the public who would participate at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for the evening. We have one appointment this evening. Ms. Martin.
I would ask this council's department for the appointment of Michelle Widows, Democrat, 78 Gay Bar Road, to the EMS Commission for term ending December 1, 2024.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Rooney. Discussion.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Ms. Widows has lived in Monroe for four years. She's currently employed as a psychiatrist in other communities and has prior experience as an emergency medical technician. Ms. Widows is currently enrolled in a master's program, master's degree program, to become a psychiatric nurse practitioner. In addition to her full-time job, Ms. Widows has been an active member of our community as a volunteer with the Medical Reserve Corps administering COVID-19 vaccines at our community clinics. Press interest in joining Monroe's community emergency response team. I see place approvals department on the agenda for this evening, and it fills a vacancy created by the resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other discussion? Now I'm going to call for a vote on the option of resolution 22-27. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 9-2-0. Action items. Town Council Committee on Finance, Health, Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters, Madam Vice Chair.
We have not had a meeting since our last council meeting.
Madam Vice Chair. Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Parking and Recreation Matters, Mr. Rooney.
Well, we have not met, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Um, through you to Mr. Rooney.
Through the chair.
The chair. Mr. Rooney.
Yes.
Do we have any future plans for committee meeting?
Yeah, we do. I was on vacation for three weeks, so I didn't get a chance to do it. I'll work on it. Just have to have a meeting quick just to figure out leadership. As of right now, tentative, but I'm not the leader. I have not been appointed, but I'll take the responsibility of answering for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight on one item of new business. It was the Qsend Technologies, Inc., order form and terms of use. That did meet a, three of us met consensus, and it will be in front of us at council.
Reed, Strategic Planning Committee. We did meet on, may I, March 3rd to discuss capital projects at that meeting after going through each department and their capital projects. Every member of the committee had an opportunity to ask any questions they wanted of those members, of those department heads and representatives. And at that meeting, a motion was unanimously approved to recommend the capital projects as presented with the following changes. Monroe Fire Services Monroe SCBA replacement be adjusted from $356,000 to $381,000. Number two, Public Works Six Wheel and Ten Wheel Truck Replacement Plan 2-6 Wheelers 19/20FY be adjusted from $275,000 to $282,000. The third item, that the line involving Public Works Wolf Park Parking Lot Transition Area be removed since it was already incorporated elsewhere in, I believe, a prior budget.
Right, right.
And finally, that all vehicle replacement approvals for the fire services shall remain in the capital project plan, but be pending until a separate meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee has been held with three fire service departments regarding vehicle replacement plans and strategy. And when we're done with this section of the budget, we will, we will have that meeting probably in the spring or early summer to move forward with planning, do a kind of a three-department plan on what they need to properly address the needs of the town. So that's what happened at SBC. Moving on to EMS.
Chairman, could I just make a comment? I think that was an excellent, informative meeting that we had that evening. All the departments that came and talked to us were well-prepared and were able to answer any questions. And I would just like to suggest that perhaps next time for capital project review, just more formally open it up to other council members, because there were a lot of questions that were answered that would perhaps not have to be repeated.
Sure, Ms. Martin. I will, I will say a link was provided to every council member to sign on and listen to the answers as well. Some of the, the reason why this is going through committee is kind of take part of the responsibility for, it's a big town with a lot of different responsibilities and our different assignments, kind of lift the burden on everyone. So that's the reason why that was done, but.
I, I don't just, I don't disagree, and I understand the meaning for it. I just thought it was informative that it would have been nice for more people to have participated, so.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I was on vacation, of course, the EMS building still took time. Where we are now with the weather breaking, we've got a lot going on. If anybody's been by the site, you can see that there's a lot of carpentry, a lot of construction going on. They, the steel on the left side is done. We have a, an effort to, we have a fire truck that's in there, so the left side has to get done, and then we can move the fire truck to the other side. But we ran into a situation where we, we did have a geotechnical engineer come out and test, but they missed some ledge. So unfortunately, we're going to get into a blasting situation and, well, there's no blasting and/or a hybrid situation of drilling and kind of, for lack of a better word, smashing the rock out of there. The problem is the utilities come in that side of the building, so it's kind of a very diligent process to do so. So we have a meeting tomorrow night to kind of go over a proposal. We have a proposal written from Nagy Brothers, who is our selected contractor, to do that. So we're waiting to see what kind of costs. I mean, we do have a, a large amount of contingency in this project to protect us from this stuff, so we have to see what exactly is going to happen with that. But the construction right now is, is going well. The new chief, Chief White, came out yesterday to look at the technology, because obviously when you work on stuff like that and you have explosives or things of that nature to remove that rock, we have to worry about the connectivity to the community in regards to emergency service. So it's, it's a very, it's a very technical kind of time with what's going on, but all the professionals are there, and I'm getting positive feedback, although after tomorrow night. But the, the project is, is moving along well. We're going to get out of, we had a little bit of a heat situation because.
Little.
Yeah.
Had a little heart attack.
Unfortunately, there's only one way to heat that building, which is the furnace, and they did the best they could to try to prevent heat loss. But obviously, when you have cold weather, there's really no way to keep that space warm. So they piped the furnace in and allowed the workers to work with a certain amount of heat, but obviously it came at expense. But there was no other alternative way. But now that we're into some warm weather, I think we'll see a deduction in that, and the people that saw those bills will not have to call me panicking. But that's, that's good news. We certainly don't want to waste money, but there was just no way, and we had a deep freeze, you know? That being said, a lot of the steel's done on the left-hand side, the woodwork is being done. We're in a phase now with EMS, we're looking at, you know, how to fit it up on the inside, so we have a professional coming in to speak to us about that. All in all, I visited the job site several times before I left, and I had a lot of contact with Burlington Construction, which is our construction manager at RISK, and everything's going very smoothly. You're going to see a lot getting done, you know? I, I think anybody that's gone by the site has seen significant progress there, so no real hiccups. Once we're out of the ground, it's going to be good, because we won't have anything invisible. You know, we should have, hopefully, we don't have to see any material costs rising, but we do have contingency for that. I believe about $80,000 for material increases, so we, we did those protections. But other than that, there's really nothing to report. The project seems to be going well. I haven't had any complaints, just things arise and we have to deal with it, you know? It's inspiring to get the thing done. I mean, we're not going from one problem to another, thank God, so that's a good thing, especially in construction projects, a lot can go. The crews have been arriving on time, doing everything on time. The building department has been working very well with the contractor. There's a log there that says when they come out and what's being approved, so if anybody goes by, they can see right away what's been approved and how it's been approved, date it's been approved. So everything's pretty solid, so that's all I have. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Mr. O'Rourke.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Kellogg, First Selectment's update.
Thank you. So just a few things to update this evening. One is, I just wanted to report a little bit about the recent issues that we've had with electrical power in the town. I'm sure everyone's aware that last week there was an incident that affected a decent part of the town where power was repeatedly going off and then back on. I was, I along with other town officials were in regular communication with Eversource about this to, again, to advocate for our residents and to get information out there. Eversource advised us, as I think most probably know now, that they identified the faulty switch that was contributing to the cycling of on and off with power. In our, in a meeting that we had today with Eversource, they advised us that that switch has been repaired and is now functioning properly. Eversource officials also agreed to provide the town with kind of a summary of what occurred and what the resolution is. I know that some residents have, have voiced and many have contacted the town to report issues and concerns that they've had relative to this situation. Now, we've continued to recommend that residents do call Eversource directly, because they do need to hear directly from their customer. And the other aspect of this is that the, the state agency that does have authority and oversight of utilities is PURA. Today, I was advised that PURA has opened and is conducting an independent investigation regarding this matter. So with that, we'll, we'll, you know, keep the community informed on what information we get back from Eversource, and, you know, certainly, obviously, everything PURA does is, is public as well. So we'll continue to get out some more information as we get it. The COVID update is pretty brief. We've gone down to an average of less than two and a half new cases per day. Much of the state has seen a significant drop as well. A couple of quick economic development updates. The property I reported earlier on 4 Easton Road, the owner has started the process for seeking land use approvals for redevelopment, which will include a proposed bagel shop. That is the property on the corner of 59 and 25, which we've been working on for quite some time to get redeveloped. And the Monroe Diner has submitted an application for permanent outdoor dining, which is now in the state, just, just got submitted, so that's in the process as well. An update on the communications tower from ARX. Site prep is underway on the town property on Fan Hill Road. Everyone will recall that this was proposed by ARX Wireless to fill the gaps in cellular coverage in the area, including the school campus. The town's public safety system will also be enhanced and upgraded by relocating and upgrading some of the equipment that is currently at the Jockey Hollow Fire EMS Station and will be placed on the new tower. This, this project obviously is not new. It's been the subject of many, many, many public meetings, was approved by Lynn Wetlands, Planning and Zoning, and this town council. We continue to, we'll be working closely. I've, we've assigned a point of contact here of the town, as well as with the company to have regular updates, and everyone involved, including the Board of Ed, is very, or I should say, the public school administration, is aware of this, of this, and will, will keep the community informed as this proceeds. And last but not least, I handed out, and just an updated planning schedule on the budget. There's really no significant updates at this time, other than the 16th meeting of Board of Finance, a special meeting to include their public hearing, was noticed today, so that is confirmed, as was originally anticipated. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. All right, going on to unfinished business. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. New business. Item A, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 22-28, resolved that the Monroe Town Council hereby accepts the tentative agreement by and between the Town of Monroe, Chapter 136-1, Local 136, International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, AFL-CIO, and CLC. That Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to repair and execute a final agreement pursuant to the tentative agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 9-2-0. Beyond Resolution, Resolution 22-29, considering act upon a resolution regarding Qsend Technologies Incorporated Order Form and Terms of Use. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 22-29, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the order form which includes acceptance of the terms of use and privacy policy and any associated documents by and between Qsend Technologies to update and host the town's website.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jason, I believe I had him first. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been working with our technology department to pursue what I feel is a very long overdue refresh of our town's website. I think, as everyone knows, our website's been kind of on the same platform for many years, certainly since I took office, and probably many years prior that. We've been doing a lot of, they've been doing a lot of due diligence, a lot of evaluation with multiple vendors. And in the final analysis, our existing provider, which is Qsend Technologies, was really the only solution that offered all the integrated solutions that we currently have, things like our service request system, our mass email system, the Qnotify system, bulk email modules, and when, when you compare the, all the services that they would, that they provide today compared to other vendors, while other vendors may have had a slightly better price on hosting, when you add in having to buy other modules through them or through even another party, which would have to be integrated, the cost was significantly higher. So Qsend is, is recommended, not just for, not only on providing the best overall solution, but also the best cost. It will also add, so it'll, it'll be a complete refresh of our website, the platform that we use, the backend that, you know, that town employees utilize for content management. We will upgrade to secure browsing, and again, as I said, continued integration with our existing modules. The costs of the upgrade are already incorporated into the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. So from a, from a numbers perspective, we're good. You do have the attached letter of opinion from the town attorney. And again, the order form that I'm executing incorporates their terms of use and their privacy policy, which are attached as well. And I know that Mr. Course is online if there are any specific questions that I can answer relative to the, the package as presented. So with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we'll call, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 9-2-0. Okay. Fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget discussions and deliberations. First, what I will say is, we received communication from the First Selectmen regarding adjustments to the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. I'm going to start off with a motion to incorporate these changes into the proposed budget. So moved. All right, motion by Vice Chair, seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion. These are, read them, increase $9,932 to the water distribution service line. I'm going to skip reading the number. Increase of $24,660 to EMS contracted services line. Increase of $7,591 to pension line. And decrease of $42,183 to the Board of Finance contingency line. Motion, we have seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Chairman, I just want to point out for the record, as I said, these, these are unresolved matters at the time that my budget was proposed. We have updated information. Because these were kind of outstanding items that we anticipated increases, we did have it covered in the Board of Finance contingency line in terms of where we would be able to allocate funds. So this is a, it's a, the net impact to the budget is zero in terms of, you know, the, the decrease to the Board of Finance contingency equals the increases in the other three lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we'll call for a motion to incorporate named changes by the selectmen to the proposed budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 9-2-0. Heidi or Ron, do you have a final number for the First Selectmen's proposed budget?
I do. So.
Can you pass it forward?
Yeah, so this is a number that the council will be voting on. So it's just a simple.
Yes. Yes.
Chairman, while, while we're doing that, if you would indulge me, I, I think just to, for formality, if the revisions to the proposed capital budget could be formalized as well and adopted, so that when we prepare the budget as proposed by council, it'll incorporate those three changes.
All right. Why don't we do capital first? Nice and easy. All right, let me find that. There it is, I got it. I got it. All right. Make a motion to adopt capital budget proposal by the First Selectmen for the 2022-2023 year as presented with the following changes. Changing the Monroe Fire Services Monroe SCBA replacement be adjusted from $356,000 to $381,000. Public Works Six Wheel and Ten Wheel Truck Replacement Plan 2-6 Wheelers 19/20FY be adjusted from $275,000 to $282,000. Finally, Public Works Wolf Park Parking Lot Transition Area be removed. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay. So a motion by Jason, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Discussion, as I will say, as I said before, during the capital review portion of the strategic planning meeting, these changes were unanimously approved. I did not put the requirement of having the fire services come to this meeting, because that's, that's really just, it is, it is part of it, but it won't be in the capital budget list. All right. So, all right. So any other discussion?
I'd just like to note for the record that the two increases are simply due to price increases that we've received and the removal of the Wolf Park Transition, simply because it was already approved in a prior year budget and did not need to be in here. The, the project is still planned and funded.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, the vote on the proposed capital projects, the changes and adoption. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 9-2-0. Okay.
That's all I have.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion to adopt the following resolution?
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I do have one motion from the floor to, to adjust the budget.
Well, Jason, we can treat that as an amendment. I do have the floor.
If that is how you'd like to treat it, I'm fine with that.
All right. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 22-30, resolved pursuant to Chapter 8, Section 4 of the Monroe Town Charter, Town Council approves the total fiscal year 2023 municipal expenditure budget of $31,707,039, which is hereby forwarded to the Board of Finance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Madam Vice Chair.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rooney. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mauer.
I move to amend the motion on the floor for a decrease in total of $750 on line item 1001-10-15103-0450-153390, the emergency management operating expense totaling that line at a new total of $12,045.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion, Mr. Mauer, is your motion, so you get to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was discussed with emergency management during their time here, this is simply operating expenses that they felt, that they, they felt that they would have approximately $1,000 left of this year's budget to spend on some of the batteries that they were, one of the batteries that they were requesting for next year. So I'm, because they will be able to utilize this year's budget to produce that battery, I'm putting in a motion to decrease by 750. This still leaves an extra $250 of cushion, just to give them a little bit of leeway room with the decrease. But they'll be able to use that money from this year's budget, so no need for it in next year's.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. First, what I'll say in discussion on this motion to amend is, number one, I don't think it's appropriate at this time to reduce the emergency bud, emergency management budget line at this time. We are just recovering from a pandemic with new variants seemingly every so, so few months, and I'm. Our emergency management service is part of, I believe, the response to the pandemic, as well as the uncertainty of military operations in Europe. And reducing the, that type of, the emergency management budget at all, I think, sends a wrong signal. Additionally, I believe that the adjustment of $750 is a little bit of micromanagement of the department's determination of what they need, as well as the First Selectmen and his presentation of the budget. Mr. O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, Mr. Benowski, what is the, on a percentage basis, what is the adjustment to the budget with the amendment that's being proposed?
It would not have a mill, an impact to the mill rate, because, you know, the mill rate's only, only goes up two digits, so it would have no impact. It's less than a percent.
That's far less than a percent. Zero, 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 zero. Something.
Like 002% of the municipal expenditures, which is why you're voting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benowski. Any other discussion? Mr. Chair. One second, Mr. Mallor. Everyone needs an opportunity before we go second. Is there anything? No?
I, I kind of, I'm on the same, you know, wavelength as you at this point to cut anything out of EMS. I mean, there's a lot of other expenses that they, they need plenty for, you know. Your money there is always, is always beneficial. I don't think any cut EMS is, is really prudent at this time.
Emergency management, Mr. Rooney.
Emergency management, that's, I'm sorry, I'm so caught up.
EMS on the brain.
Right.
Any other discussion before I go around for a second time? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin.
That's all right. I was just, I was just going to say, I don't, you know, we are asked to do our due diligence looking at the budget and looking at every, every piece of that budget. And I think Mr. Mallor did that. And if, if I'm not mistaken, that evening when the gentleman was here and he was questioned on that, buying that one battery this year, he said that he could do that, that wasn't an issue at all. So I don't, I don't think it's much of a penalty to, to EMS. And I don't think it was construed that way at all by Mr. Mallor. Mr. Mallor speak for himself.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Jessica?
Nothing, Derek.
Mr. Mallor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd like to say that it is, it is our job to look at every line of this budget. And it's not micromanagement, it's what our duty is, it's what we were elected to do. So we are here to look at these and, yes, these changes can often be small, but those small changes are what we're supposed to be doing here. I wholeheartedly believe the Selectmen put up a great budget. That doesn't mean there's never any room for improvement, and it's our job to do our best to improve that budget. Also, in response to the questions about the ongoing pandemic, in fact, emergency management came up well under each year because of the pandemic. So if anything, a continuation of that would decrease their needs, not increase them, because the costs that happened throughout the pandemic were decreased because of lack of, no training, in-person trainings happening. Here, we expected those to happen again, which is why there's not a further adjustment on this to be in line with, more, more in line with what their five-year average would be. As was discussed, when they came before us and, before the council, they were specifically asked about this. They said that they could do without $1,000 of this budget. That was their decision, not, that was their response, not our decision. They believe that, yes, they can use their budgetary amount from this year to cover that. And by only making the motion for $750 rather than $1,000, we are still leaving them with a slight cushion to help them throughout the next year, should there be any unexpected expenses. I believe it is our duty, no matter how small of a change, to make sure that we keep this council relevant and vote on these as necessary to present the proper budget to the people who have elected us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallor. All right. If there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay.
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 Yeah. Motion fails. Three to six. All right. Now on to the main motion. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-30 with the budget line, $31,707.
Mr. Chair, before we go to, I believe we can still have discussion on this motion?
$39. Yes, we can, we're just going back to it. So, all right, I will open up discussion. Go ahead. Anyone want to discuss this number?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mallor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I've stated, I do believe this is a strong budget, I will support it. I do believe we could have made some improvement to that budget. There, I do ask, as we pass this on to our Board of Finance, and I will present this to them at their meeting, that they also take a look at not only the line items that, line item that I discussed, but also at our capital plan, especially in the bonding area. I don't feel that this council had enough information to make a significant change to the bonding. But considering the amount that is rolling off of our bonding amount, I think it would be prudent for the Board of Finance to look at those numbers and see if they, they feel an increase in bonding would be, for the next year, would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Mallor. Any other discussion? Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I would agree with Mr. Mallor. I would, in the past, we have, and this is no reflection on, on current chair, but we had as a council in the past, sent on with a budget, a letter from the Town Council, stressing that we had thoroughly reviewed and, you know, very politely said that we had supported this budget and we would hope that they would not do any drastic revisions to that. I would like to see this council do something similar. And if possible, within that, put that, if it wouldn't be the full council, some consideration. Thanks, Kevin. There was some consideration on the council that they look at bonding, because that is a concern that I have too, particularly for roads, if we could say that there was concern on the council that perhaps they might want to add some money to the bonding for roads. So I would ask the chair, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, would the chair entertain writing a letter from the council to the Board of Finance, as has been past practice?
Well, what I would say is, first, that we passed a motion earlier this evening to approve of and pass on the capital project, projects as presented with those three changes, which included the bonding amount for the roads, as presented by the First Selectmen. So any letter would only include what is actually passed and adopted by the council.
Well, may I?
Go ahead.
That, that's true, I agree with that, but I, I think what we're doing is ask, it's the Board of Finance that has that, you know, power, if you will, to increase that bonding. We're asking them if they will look at that, you know, portion of the budget.
I, I'm confident that Chairman Manjos will thoroughly go over the budget and consider all of Town Council's actions. I don't know if a letter is appropriate, other than our voting record on what we pass on from the council to the Board of Finance. Anything that we are not voting on, I cannot speak for everyone on, and I would not intend to.
Well, again, with past practice, I, I don't think the chair has ever spoken for everyone, but the chair has indicated to the Board of Finance that there were concerns from members of the council, not necessarily the whole council, about certain issues. So I, I think that that's an appropriate thing.
Okay. Well, right now, we have a motion to adopt the budget with the, the number that was given. Are there any other motions? Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I think, I'd like to thank Ron Benowski, Heidi, and Mike Manjos, and Ken for putting together a very solid budget under conditions. Very happy with the way the town's moving, very happy with this budget, very happy with the increases. I, I personally was expecting significantly less, so I'm very proud to be part of this, this council vote. I approve this budget 100%. That's all I have.
Mr. Rooney, any other discussion? Mr. O'Rourke.
Yeah, and I believe the, the council has done their due diligence in reviewing this budget. Not passing a .0025 reduction does not constitute a dereliction of duty, in my opinion.
Mr. O'Rourke, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for adoption of Resolution 22-30, which includes budgeted number, $707,39. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those in favor, please say nay.
Nay.
Zero. There are no unfinished matters of unfinished business and no unfinished matters of new business. So second public participation this evening. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:45 this evening. Thank you, everyone.